I will open up our meeting with our open session. And any of our guests here who would like to say anything? I hope you're all, I'm getting very good feedback with the mayor's update. And I'm trying to get, and anybody who would like to help us do this. I'm trying to get more emails to get it out to more residents. I am looking at putting out a letter to all of our residents. And just putting something in, "Look what you're missing. Please give us your email addresses because we'd love to hear from you." Anybody who sends a comment to me or whatever, I answer personally. So anyway, if anybody sees anything that they would like, or just email me and we'll get it out there.
Could I make a suggestion?
Yes, you may.
On the bulletin board that's outside here, we might want to put something in bold on that as well that says, "We're looking for your email to send you this information electronically."
Good suggestion.
And, you know, something bold and bright on paper or writing or something like that. We will pay people's attention while we buy.
We will get on that tomorrow. And if anybody has any comments, we just released our new website. Needs to be tweaked. It's not completed by any means, but I think it's, looks better and easier to work than it has been in the future. Or in the past, I should say. Okay. Our first little...
Can I ask you one?
Sure.
Could you just elaborate a little bit on the adding of the task force people? Like what the actual duties are?
Absolutely. I put that up on the website. And the bulletin board has it outside, so you can look at that. I'm going to ask, and I realize we didn't put a date. I'd like to have it in with the next two weeks for our next meeting. And so...
And when it says flexible hours, what does that mean?
It means that we, and it's tough, but maybe Jerry, one of the reasons why Jerry here is he's part of the current task force. It's, and Jerry jumped in. It's, could be all over.
This is we meet whenever we can schedule times when we can all do it because we all have jobs during the day and such. So it's like...
Correct. So is it mostly...
Sometimes we meet in the mornings, sometimes we meet evening. Some days it's one day, some it's...
Some days, like when we had to meet with our Rockland Executive that day. It was 1:00 in the afternoon, people were taking days off. It's, when I, when we say flexible, it's really flexible.
Meeting with the state representatives at times, sometimes it's difficult to look ahead of time.
Do you have a sense of a little time between minutes generally or is it like a month?
It varies.
It varies, but it depends on where we're at, whether, you know, things are happening. But, you know, we've been meeting every couple of weeks or so for, you know, two or three hours. Sometimes it might be, you know, like two meetings in a week or, you know, two weeks in a row we'll have a meeting. Then there's like, you know, the big public meetings happen once a while, a quarter or something like that.
I was just curious about the, obviously the date form was to do that. You know, you certainly are limited.
Yeah.
Okay.
We sometimes meet at 7:00 in the morning just because of that, 7:00, 7:30. Like I'll go in to work late sometimes to meet in the mornings. Now like I said, one day when we had to go meet the day day, I took the day off and worked from Monday to the day.
Hi, I just wanted to ask about minutes of the meetings. I know you take minutes at these meetings.
Yes.
But are there minutes from the meetings between the task force and the New York State?
Though we already do not take minutes there.
Why?
It's not, it's really more of an advisory committee. It's not a official government board. So it's not, there's no real reporting requirements. We need a secretary to page it and type it up. We just have to...
Couldn't you just have a tape recorder?
Well, that's not minutes. That would actually be, you know, that would be a recording.
So if the thruway says something during one of those negotiations, how would you prove in the future that they've said that?
I don't know if we've ever had a reason why we needed to do that.
I think that people want to know what happened at those meetings. I guess that's the reason. And again, if it's just as simple as having someone, a secretary, I guess, sorry, I'm a little late. But in terms of expanding the task force, I don't know if this is a part of that. But you just ask somebody to come and do that type of work. I don't think they ask for someone, especially again, since it's that need for transparency that, you know, everyone's in one another.
We, well, let's, let's look at that.
I have a comment also.
Okay.
Regarding the mayor's update, you know, you certainly do put a very positive and proactive spin on everything. And everything, I preface, I preface with all due respect because personally I'm very fond of you. But professionally, I'm very disturbed with the lack of transparency here. And the fact of, if Hope hadn't called you about the trees, if Hope hadn't talked about the sound wall, neither of those things would have been known or acted upon. But, you know, the way you present it, you present it like it just came to you and you're acting on it. And like you're the hero, which, you know, maybe eventually you will be regarding these issues. But right now, we really have had no answers, no action. And really still living with it on a daily basis. And it just, I think it's really putting a positive spin on something that, I think it's not quite accurate the way, the way it's being put out there.
Thank you for your comment.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What kind of action are you looking for? You're looking for action from the village or you're looking for action from the thruway? I'm not clear as to when you say actions. Could you be more specific?
Yeah, well, I mean, the mayor came, Ms. Jaffe came to the Cameron's property. And Ms. Jaffe was absolutely horrified. And, you know, said, "We're going to do something about this, et cetera, et cetera." And at the last meeting, Alon said, "Could you write a letter?" We've had no letter, no communication from you. You know, we see you at the meetings, but we've had, I mean, I know other people have gotten calls from you. And like when you were prior to the March 20th meeting, I know you were walking around with Connie Bear, visiting people. I mean, we've got no feedback from you on any of the things. And, you know, talk about directly affected. I mean, these two are really directly affected.
I might add, Hope was there when we were there, your sister was there.
Yeah.
And I have told both your brother-in-law and your sister that Brian Connie Bear's given me a call and who's going to be calling them about putting up a temporary wall to help them with the noise barrier. And I just found that out today and I told them for that.
He's going to, you mean, he's going to be putting up like a rubber fence?
No, it's not a solution. Would anybody else like to say anything?
In terms of, did you talk about, I think the last, at the last meeting, we talked about expanding the task force?
Yes.
And I never got a letter? I think there was something...
We have, I put it out on the website. I put it out here and there.
So could you just say exactly what it is after three?
Yeah, we can make you a copy. It's right out there. We're going to put it to you.
Because I want to send out something that, you know, from you that I can just push out to everyone that, you know, it's interpreted or...
Yeah, we want to push it. It's on the website, it's out here. And we'll give you a copy of that. And we're looking at, I'm possibly looking to get response of that, but then for the next meeting. So they would be sending them back to Seattle.
Excuse me, can I make a comment from here? You know, as a public official, we have to accept criticism. And I'm the first to realize that there are times we do things that we can do better. And nobody can help us with that better than you, the public. That being said, I also want you to know that we are taking steps and actions. They might not be to your satisfaction, but they're being done. I met with the mayor, I'm sure she'll go through this in greater detail. But we met with Congresswoman Lowey about a number of things, including issues that we have regarding the need for a public meeting regarding some of the issues with the thruway. And one of the items that we raised that we had concerns about was specifically the issue that you're facing with the trees being taken down. We've also communicated with our county legislator, Nancy Wilken, regarding this. And we also looked at wanting to see our countywide public officials get far more engaged in this conversation regarding the Tappan Zee Bridge being the gateway to Rockland. And specifically what will the sound barriers, the land sound barriers look like. And we've also been in contact with Burke Lawson, who is a state engineer, to help us with the...
I'll be going into that.
Yeah, whatever. So I don't want to step on what the mayor's going to be saying.
With all due respect, with you.
Excuse me, I am very respectful of you when you're talking and I really would appreciate that from your part. As a resident here and also sitting at the epicenter of this bridge construction, we are feeling the pain that you are feeling. And what is most important is that we stand united in the efforts that we undertake to get compensation and satisfaction and attention to the issues that are specific to our individual plights and our collective plight.
Yes, with all due respect, we for years have been in touch with those very officials. And actually Schumer and Gillibrand have been very proactive in advocating for the neighbors. So none of what you say to, you know, people like us who have been doing this for more than 20 years sounds like a magic wand. We, everybody that you've contacted, we and many of the neighbors have contacted individually, both for individual plights and for overall plights. So to, you know, bring more names and add them to the stew is not necessarily a positive because it's just more names to grandstand if something good happens and more names to pass the buck if they decide not to take action or to cave to the governor's deputies and, "Oh, okay, I'll be quiet." As you know, that happens.
Well, you know, I, we are all, you know, walking down a path we've never been down before. We have a history of what happened the last time this bridge was built. We have a second bite at the apple. And I think it takes activism and not just once and not just by one individual, but by the collective, we the collective village taking action.
Well, that's what we've been begging for for years.
Well, I think we're in the process of doing it and I do understand your frustration. Nobody has the same as me and I.
One more thing, you say we haven't been down this road before. We've been down, we were down at 60 years ago. Some of us weren't around then, but we were down at 60 years ago. And I think it's almost worse this time. And because now they're doing it with a smile and PR professionals. And what they do and what they say are two different things. It's a case of, huh, who do you believe, me or your lying eyes? So, thank you.
Can I say something here? I see this young lady has set up a TV camera here.
This is an open meeting and as long as, and correct me if I'm wrong, Keith, as long as she's not obstructing anybody or that people don't feel that they can speak what they want in, you know, what they would like to say and it's unobtrusive, if she can, don't.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Yes, some municipalities will impose rules and regulations about how it can be done, but those are typically only in the case where you can have disruption or distraction as a result of somebody using a camera. But generally speaking, there's no, there's no prohibition against it. It's a public meeting. You know, as you know, many meetings are now televised, live as well, so.
Do I have any say if I object to that I prefer the camera not being on me?
As a, as a...
As a trustee in the village of South Nyack?
Well, you can certainly voice any...
Yes, and I do voice it. I really prefer not to be, you know, on camera. So I would ask you that you put it the other way?
Off key here?
Oh yeah?
You're totally off camera.
Great, thank you.
Anything else?
This is something separate.
Huh?
In terms of, and I heard this from one of the neighbors and I just kind of not understand it better. There's two apartment buildings next to 200 Piermont Avenue, which someone said was up for sale. Is that correct?
I don't know that. My understanding is, yes, I want to be explaining yourselves.
And then is there a group of people that are looking or is it a corporation that's looking at it? Is there religious people looking at it?
Just that it's up for sale.
And how do we understand how that sale, you know, is there something in terms of...
I think that's a question for our lawyer.
Well, I don't know anything better. Typically, these are private transactions, so there wouldn't be any official public information about such a thing. And it would typically be whatever one finds out from, you know, from listening to the railroad tracks, you know?
Right, right. I just didn't know if there was, if there was a large, a large piece of property that had X amount of residents within it. Does, is there some type of alert that goes off on a, on a town level? I would obviously think that on a board level.
Why would there be such an alert?
No.
No, I mean, all of a sudden someone's buying a large piece of property with lots of, like if someone bought, you know...
You mean you're talking like if they bought the Eagle Brock or whatever it's called?
Is there something that...
They're free to do it. I don't see where the village would have any...
I'm just wondering if there's ever something that comes up.
If there's a land use issue, I'd say they're going to change, if they were going to change the building or use of it, then they would be involved by the village with a simple private sale.
If there's an application to a land use board, but otherwise the only way, I mean, you can have a private transaction.
If they just, yeah, they just build it and keep it as it is? It's no different than when you bought your house?
That was really my question.
Right, then the only other thing...
Land use.
I mean, the only other thing that would happen would be the tax assessor would get a recording of the recording of the deed if there's a new owner, so that the tax bill ultimately would be changed to reflect a new owner.
And of course, that's public information.
Yeah, right, yeah.
The owner of the tax, you know? Well, doesn't that surprise you?
Okay, thank you. Thanks for putting that up.
I would like to say I got a nice note from Jennifer Rothschild, who said she thought the village was going in the right direction and was pleased. So I was happy about that. I'm getting a lot of good comments from the mayor's update. And I always put it in there, if anybody wants to contact me or email me, please feel free to do so.
Just one question.
Go ahead.
Do you have any timeline or update about the meeting that's going to be held to announce the SUP?
Oh, you are?
Yes, I am.
You are, okay.
I have just one other thing, may I have a follow-up?
Sure.
You are?
At the last meeting, I mentioned that, that I felt very strongly that South Nyack was the lead agency in regard to the Rockland side of Rockland County. That South Nyack is the village that is most definitely affected and most definitely affected in a negative way. Apparently somebody must have taped last week's meeting, two weeks ago, because somebody, but I don't want to mention his name, but somebody wrote and said that he thought that I was being, apparently being narrow-minded and I should be open to all these suggestions from these other surrounding villages. And I personally have a hard time accepting that concept because the village of South Nyack has really been under the gun regarding this construction. And as some very bright woman down in Salisbury said, "South Nyack is the government's collateral damage down there." We're the people, we are the people of South Nyack that are listening to the banging out there that started this morning, has been going on. I spoke to a man from Tappan Zee Contractors. There are a thousand piles going in out there. Each one takes approximately, because I timed them, takes approximately 35 to 40 minutes. So at a thousand pilings going in there, that's 500 hours of banging away. Bang, 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 bang. You know, every other second it's going off there. Same thing with the carnival atmosphere with the lights out there at night. Because for people who live near there, it doesn't affect you. But for people that do live near there, it's a, it's certainly something that's affecting our quality of life. Now, I passed out these things here. This came from Empire, the Empire, the insurance company. Anybody who wants to take a look at it. And what it does, talks about the effect of noise on people. So this is from somebody else and we certainly have an effect on it. So if this gentleman feels that I'm out of line regarding the village of South Nyack, I think he's going to have to live with that because that's my statement, that's how I feel. The people of Piermont have nothing to say about what we do here in South Nyack. The people of Nyack have nothing to say about what we do here. And if anybody has a problem with it, they certainly can contact me and I'll speak to them and tell them the same thing over and over again. And I don't answer emails, so it's, you know.
I'll just translate.
Okay.
I'm sorry, just one last thing. The meetings used to be tape recorded by Sally. Do you no longer use tape recorders to record the meetings? Oh, you still do? Okay, so those meetings, okay, thank you.
The tapes were getting broken.
And we have to keep these tapes for six months.
Right. Oh, and then you can get rid of them?
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, if we can move on out of open session to approve the regular minutes of May 27th. If everybody's had a chance to read those.
On May 27th, in the first paragraph of Franklin Street Park Tennis Court, the phrase is used, "National Junior Tennis and Learning Program for Under-Resourced Kids." And I think that should be taken out. I mean, Karen was clear that it was meant to be open to everyone. And although she may feel that they benefit more, she made a point of saying that it's open to everyone for a phrase period. So I think that should be reflected in the... That's all I have.
Anything else? Do I have a motion to accept the minutes of May 27th?
Yes, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of Tuesday, May 27th.
Have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Special meeting on June 4th. Has everybody had a chance to read those minutes? Do I have...
Yes, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve the special meeting in South Nyack. Board of Trustees, Tuesday, June 4th, 2014.
Do I have a second? Second? All in favor? Police report. I want to take a chair.
Right side here?
No, Chief McBray is at 7:00. So take a minute to look at this. Jimmy, would you like to, um, I, would you like to talk about anything you can tell you?
The biggest thing on the court is obviously the work we started doing on the tennis court. We removed all the severe cracks, compacted down below and building it back up. It has to cure for two weeks and then we proceed with the final top course of leveling it out and painting. It's much better shape than it was.
And the major sinkhole up here on that area?
The sinkhole, that was the sewer department's back on the sewer pump station property. It was a sinkhole, it was about 16 feet deep, so they had to take out the storm drain that goes down that property in order to make the repair to the sewer. That was done and our sewer, sand, storm drain was put back and made sure that it was correct.
Any questions?
Was this a big, was this a court?
This is a golfing, your tennis court?
So far, it's a few hundred dollars for the materials. I did order the paint. I don't have the exact person on that.
Nothing at all?
Nothing what we're looking at to have done with the other methods. So hopefully this will last us long to find some funding.
The courts are in use while the...
The courts are open. They've been open since last Friday.
Village Justice, Mayor receipts total of $19,128. And a $17,136 received in April. $7,599 went through state. $9,537 was retained by the governor. The building code fire inspector makes fees total of $570. And they all have their list of what they were for. Village clerk, your receipts, the mayor's receipts total of $775.
Now the questions are going in?
Yes, go ahead, trustee.
Sally, it seems like a, this is an excessive amount of alarm permits. I mean, do these people know something that we don't know?
Now, these are...
It just seems like there's a lot of them. Normally we don't, I mean, I know...
Now, that's because the, in the past, because we renew a lot. A person who has an alarm pays $25 a year.
Oh, they do? Oh, okay.
And in the past, it's been spread out over a year. But now we send out our alarms, all of them at one time.
Great, okay.
I have a question. So what is MacAdams?
Oh, that is a, a peddler. She's been buying food, yes, to the, then at the, at the president. It's a peddler. Treasure report, we have that here today. We're going to look that over. Keith, do we have anything from you?
Nothing to report.
Old Business Fuel Dispensing and Storage System Review Bids.
What about that?
We have the bids. I believe Sally put them in the packet there, the one bid is the most. There's a little bit of addition to it, so I don't know if you and I want to get together and go over some of the other things that are part of it before we make a final decision. That's, that's not going to be the final number. And above that number, as we discussed, is the fire suppression system and then the work that we have.
Is that the gem store? Or is that the, that expensive bid, the 91/6?
No, the lowest bid was 47.
Right, a viro safe, a viro safe. Okay.
So, do you want to just hold off until we can...
Do you have something to discuss beyond the idea of, beyond the idea of eliminating gasoline temporarily, which I don't think is...
Well, I've raised the question if we were ever going to see the police move out of here to a new location, if at that point we would put in a fuel depot for the police at that spot. We use very little gasoline. And gasoline requires the fire suppression system and all that. So if that was somewhere on the docket, then we could do away with it. But a lot, and I've discussed it, it seems like...
The idea is that the diesel, the diesel alone is, would be less expensive. The problem is that, that it's a significant problem for Brent dealing with Nyack and having to go and buy gas in retail. So, you know, we might want to discuss how it's broken out between the police budget and the village budget based on that because it is, it is the case that the gasoline side of it incurs more expense than the diesel side. And Jimmy's use of gasoline is almost negligible. We could, we could live without it. So maybe, maybe we need to talk to Brent about how we balance the cost.
And we should, we should bring that up with the police board.
He'll have to take it to the police board, but I think that's something we should, we should talk about because that's, it's significant again, it's different from what we had originally anticipated. So I would suggest that Jimmy have talked to Brent, get him to take it to the court.
Get all the numbers together, give me something concrete.
Interior painting bids, is that, do we have anything new on that? You were going to look up, Keith. Did you find anything for us that...
Yeah, it's mine, it just so happens that the two lowest bids are supposedly these are sold for prime doors and therefore have no employees. And if that's the case, then they don't have to pay themselves for their own wage. So you... So, you, you, there is an exception in that case. Generally speaking, all municipal contracts that are let out require the payment of the applicable prevailing wage to its employees. So, but on the other hand, if there are no employees, we kinda have this conversation last week.
But I think the problem with it, it gets back to intent. I mean, clearly, one person is not gonna do the whole job, and so obviously, they're gonna have people in there who they're gonna 1099, and as far as I'm concerned, that's just a mechanism for circumventing the prevailing wage. And I don't think that we can condone that, I mean, it's not appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I don't know, Sally and I talked this afternoon, I don't know whether these couple of bidders are one-woman, man operations.
What if they were one-man operation?
Then it doesn't apply, because, um, because they don't have any employees, and they can choose, if they're a sole proprietor, they could choose to pay themselves less than the prevailing wage.
So then I think what we need to do is we have to have Denise tomorrow to call them up and see if they're a one-man show, so to speak, then we can look at that. If they're not, then we can't. Is that what you're saying, Keith?
Yeah, I mean, I think to Alan's point is, you wanna know what you're buying.
Right.
And the intent of the labor law is to make, which you might agree with or you might not, but the intent is to, is to assure us a minimum level of wage for employees, so.
What question do you want asked?
Well, the question I have is if this is a singular employee, how long would it take to get the job done, as opposed to somebody puts them in the team?
I think that's not the issue, the issue is, you know-
I understand that, but it is in terms of cost. It is the two lowest bids, so then, for the two lowest bids, how much time would that job take if it's one person painting versus somebody who has, who's paying the prevailing rate and?
But even if it's one person painting, the clear intent is to circumvent, I very much disagree with the prevailing wage law, but it is the law. And, and, and simply finding a simple mechanism to get around it by being a sole proprietorship and not taking a salary is, it may be, may be appropriate to the letter of the law, but it's not the intent. And, you know, by, by engaging someone like that, I think that we're, you know, engaging in, uh, missing the purpose of the law in exchange for the letter of the law.
In that case, I don't agree, because the intent was really to protect the employee. So if you're both the employer and the employee, you don't fall into that category. So the alternative really is to go out further and solicit bids from companies that aren't gonna pay prevailing wage. We know that that's gonna, you know, double or triple the cost. So, um, those are basically your alternatives.
Yeah, but I would be in favor of casting a wider net to find someone who does legitimate prevailing wage, rather than someone who's willing to, you know, structure their company in such a way as to avoid that law.
Well, what Keith is saying, they're not structuring their company to avoid their law, they are the company, it's just them.
Yes, I understand.
But if it's, if in fact, if it really is just Jack Painter or Jane Painter, then, um, and you might like the work that Jack or Jane does, and then that's a great deal, because it's less expensive than prevailing wage, it's less expensive than, uh, you know, using, you know, the-
Why don't we, before we make a decision, why don't we have Denise go out and see if there are any other folks out there who are willing to come in and give us some estimates?
You know, I have to object, can I just say, because this has been going on for how many weeks now? We've put a call for bids, we had six people respond. I think we've met our obligation in terms of the receipt of, of, you know, of, uh, potential contractors, I just think we should make a decision.
Well, is there-
Let me, let me just say that of the others that are on, of the six that are here, there are six in this bottom list, two of which are also on top.
Yes.
So these six, none of those other four that are down here are paying prevailing wages. So all those people would have to re, would have to reissue a bid with prevailing wages.
Okay.
We did, indeed, we've already received one of those who's reissued it. This is from two weeks ago, so it's not been reflected here. But the, um, we, I don't know exactly how she phrased her question to these two people who said that they already had no employees. Whether she phrased, "Are you gonna be paying all by yourself?" But that question was put forth, I don't know. But that's the question you are gonna want raised now. Oh, yeah, sorry.
My sense is that they'll say, "Yes, yes, it's just me," so they can get the contract, right? And, and that may or may not be their intent, but I think, I think we're supposed to go a little bit beyond that, if we were just, you know, a private corporation, this contract would probably be fine.
The way you go beyond that is in the contract with this contractor, there're gonna be stipulations about how it, how the contract is structured, and a prohibition against violation of the labor law. And if it's a sole proprietorship, then it can be only that one person who's doing the work. So that's the way you would ferret out and whether they're really complying with it or not. Because you're right, I mean, you don't wanna go down the primrose path and turns out that, you know, you show up and there are ten painters here.
And can you draw that contract up, though?
Oh, sure, sure.
Okay.
Can I ask another question here? Is there any chance of getting a hold of the Labor Department and, you know, explaining the situation to them and saying, like, "We're between a rock and a hard place in this situation, and it's not clear to us what we really can do."
Well, I can certainly be in touch with them, I mean, it's clear to me what we can do, but if you wanted something from the Labor Department, we could-
Possibly a waiver or something in this situation, I mean?
Well, if you want, we can certainly be in touch with the Labor Department and-
Explain that we're trying to comply with them, but however, this is a situation that's really not clear to us.
And if that doesn't work, I think we should go with one of these people and make, and have Keith write up, there's a board agree, and we have Keith write up of the contract, and it's gotta be, you know, if it's Bonnie Christian, it's gotta be Bonnie Christian who comes in every day and paints and, and-
Well, that's right, I think what you really are saying is that you want a comfort level that if you go this way, you are complying with the requirements of the prevailing wage law. And that you don't find out that, you know, this is in fact a subterfuge, and that you then are-
Correct, and I think that's what Alan's thinking.
Yeah, so what I, so what I can do is, I can be in touch with the Labor Department, we can see if we can get, you know, a defender of opinion letter of some kind, and I think that'll make, that'll help out.
Anything else on, uh, painting bids? GovPayNet Services Participation Agreement, are we gonna hold that off until Brent?
We can, uh, I was hoping Brent would be here, 'cause I've been speaking with Dave about this. This is the same company, as I mentioned before, that they would originally come down, but we have a lot more information about them. Dave spoke to them in some detail, and also found out some of the other municipalities that are using them, which certainly made me a lot more comfortable about it. You know, if you wanna wait till Brent is here to go ahead and sign it, we can do that. I asked Dave to get the agreement in place so that we wouldn't have to go, you know, cycle after cycle discussing it. But if you wanna hold it, it's here.
I would like to hold it and speak to Brent.
Okay, uh, we could, we could pass a resolution authorizing you to sign it pending your discussion with Brent, if you want, can we do something like that?
If you would like to do that, that's fine.
Well, I don't see any reason to put it off me, and we've talked about this, it's gone running around. As long as you're okay, that's the final, the final hurdle, let's, let's do that.
Do I have a resolution?
I'll make a resolution to empower the mayor to sign the contract with GovPayNet to provide services for the police department and the village to accept, um, credit card payment.
Do I have a second?
No, second not.
Pending her discussion with the chief of police.
Do I have a second?
No, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, can I, can I have that back, and I have it all again? Uh, two weeks ago at our last board meeting, I brought up the Miller-Bacher benches that, um, TZ Construction, uh, Brian Connybear had showed us, and we were willing to pay for those if we thought that they would look nice or wanted them around the Esposito Trail. Alan stated that he felt, you know, if this was going to be looked at as a gift and a rule of something else, he really didn't think we should do that. And we put it on, 'cause we're gonna go over it once, and what is the consensus of the board?
I'm leery, I mean, like-
Okay.
Because of the past history of, not so much happens in contractors, but the thruway, and, you know, we're in a public relations situation with them right now.
Kathy?
And I think if they have an opportunity to run with the flag of, look how well we're doing, we may not have any second, why did that, I hope?
Okay, Kathy, you're, um, I think I'm more of a pragmatist here. It's a gift, uh, it's something that we don't already have there, it holds us to no obligation, or doesn't put any pressure on us to, um, to respond to the thruway authority in that concern in any particular way. They're tracted looking, I don't know.
Okay, how about if we hold, we don't have to make a decision today anyway. Andrew said Willie's not here, he will be at the next meeting, or if we bring that up again?
Yeah, I think it all comes down to trying to predict the future here, you know, that's-
Can I just ask, how was presented to you when he first came to you? He just walked up and said-
No, no, we were, we were, no, we were at a meeting, and he just said he was in a conversation with this person who builds them, and he wanted me to bring it before the board to see if we had any interest that they would put him along the Esposito Trail, if we had an interest, no cost to the village. And that's exactly what I'm doing. So that's just how it came out. So if we wanna dabble it, um, till Andrew comes back, we can do that. Noise monitor proposal from Brooke. Everybody has a copy-
Anybody didn't get a copy of this proposal? This is, yeah, it's basically, I just can say about it, what it is.
Did everybody have a chance? I know that Kathy and I spoke to him at length, um, we are, I know that the boards have brought up about meetings of the noise monitors, what we would like to see the noise monitors show, what they are showing. Brian Connybear had sent three weeks ago, we'll get you something, nothing's been done. And, um, so we've spoken to Brooke Crossen, and I know that in the past, Salisbury Point has hired him and used him.
Um, yes, do you want, is that just a comment, or?
I'm making it just a comment, and that's how I got his name to call. And he has given us a proposal of about, he doesn't think it's gonna take anymore, approximately $1,600 with his hours, with the environmental scientist, his analyst, to get back to us and explain to us about how the noise monitor works, how we can get it to work maybe the way we want it to. And, um, I'm just putting it before the board, are you interested in us doing this to the village? Are you not?
Yes.
Does he have any, any current work on this project, did anyone know if he's, um, he might have?
What I can tell, what I can tell you is that, um, uh, we don't have him actively working with us at the moment in Salisbury. He did do work with the village of Tarrytown in the review of the, um, the concerns that both the village of Tarrytown had, the clay, which is a condominium complex in Tarrytown, and Salisbury Point, relative to what the noise is going to be like to live with, with the pile driving. And recall that when, um, the DEIS, which was the draft environmental impact study, and then the final environmental impact study came out, there was adjustments that were made to that document based on the work that he had done and the analysis he had done with folks looking at those lengthy documents and conversations with, um, the experts that the thruway authority had hired at the time. We have every reason to believe that there wouldn't be no sound monitors placed anywhere had it not been for his, you know, diligent work in challenging what those documents had to say. And that, um, at the time, I had approached the mayor of South Nyack and thought that it would be helpful to engage all of us in that. The decision then was, was no, and that was, you know, a decision then. But we're faced now with having this sensitive equipment, you know, placed all around the village, and without a clear, um, understanding of what the data is recording and how to interpret it. And that there's been some, um, misunderstanding as to how to interpret that data, and we're laypeople when it comes to this, and it's, we think enormously important that, and I think of your plight with the trees being taken down, that the amount of noise that you are facing is different than when you had, you know, mature trees there. But more importantly, there's action that should be taken if there is, um, violation of the, the sound decibels, and that they have 30 minutes to- I'm sorry, that they have 30 minutes to, um, respond, to record that there's a violation, and an ad word to shut it down, and after that is shut, the, whatever the noise is shut down, they have to have corrective plan that they'll never do it again. And all of that sounds very helpful, but if we don't know how to interpret the data, how do we know that in fact we're not violating it?
We don't know.
So, I think the question here that we've raised as a board is, um, uh, we have to keep them honest by having people of that level of expertise reading that data on behalf of those of us in the village.
So I, if, I hope that everybody's had a chance to read this, if not, but I would like to be able to call Mr. Crossen back, and on behalf of the village, use his time and energies and his expertise, but I would need a resolution to do that.
I will make the resolution that we call Mr. Crossen and ask him to, or hire him to do the necessary work regarding the noise factor on tap and Z contractors. And he will give us his expertise and interpret the sound monitors that are spread throughout the village of South Nyack.
Can we put a cap of 10 hours, as he suggests, on that, before we re-
For the, to, we go no higher than the $1,600?
Well, make it 10 hours, yes, 10 hours, which couldn't conceivably go to 1,800, because it was all him.
Okay.
I would say 10 hours.
And that's to be reviewed?
And then review.
Yes.
Okay.
Great, I'll make the resolution.
Okay, do I have a second?
Sure.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I think it's also helpful to know that it's not just having a better understanding of the noise data, but that we've also asked him to clar, help to clarify for us the type, the color, the height, the land noise barriers that are, um, proposed to be installed in the village. He had given some really very helpful suggestions at the time, when there were public hearings, and we have not heard, um, what the thruway authority was planning on doing. And I don't want us to get blindsided, and I don't think, and I know that the mayor doesn't want that happening, so.
As I said earlier, there are over, there're gonna be over 1,000 pile drive, 1,000 piles being driven in, at least 35 to 40 minutes per, so that's over 500 hours, more than 500 hours that we're, that certainly we've been, I don't know how many we've been subjected to, but there's a lot more in the future.
They said that 20% of them are noise.
Well, that's a lot of noise, and I have one of these things here for somebody who wasn't here. They talk about how noise affects you, and this is from the Empire, the health insurance company, and I think it's a fairly reliable, so, they talks, they talk about danger zones regarding hearing. And, you know, for us to be put in a danger zone because of this, then I certainly think we have some, we should have some say to it. And the only way to do it is to hire an expert who can understand.
Thank you. While we're just talking about this, I had a conversation with Brian Connybear yesterday. He is, uh, he was having a meeting today, he's- He's looking to call me with a date for our community meeting. At that point, we will look at either the Nyack College or the Living Christ Church, I don't know who will be available at that time. He is looking at, I have asked him to present. I know the task force had some ideas. The task force along with Greg Tulen, who's been working with the task force, came in with some ideas and met with us. I know that Michael Hogan had a couple of ideas and some other residents. And I have asked Brian to make sure that each concept is looked at. And we've kind of decided that it will be a workshop where they will have different concepts set up that all the people in the village will go look at each one, see what their thoughts are and that type of thing. So I'm looking at getting a date from him this week. And hopefully it gives us enough time to get a community meeting by the end of June. My goal is to have one at the end of June because July and August, you know, everybody's going on vacation and then we get lost down the road and it's time. So I will certainly put that out there as soon as I hear from him.
And you've been pressing him for this meeting since on or about the 30th of May?
Yes, yes, I have. You know, he's been asking for more time, more time. But it's come to the point where I said, you know, we're running out of time. But I do want to make sure that no concept goes overlooked. I think it's important for every concept to be put out there. Okay.
Do you want to start because he's here?
The South, okay. South Nyack 10 Mile Run, Keith Mike. Come on up.
How are you?
Mike, your last name is?
Angarola. First off, I want to apologize for not being here at the end of May. I know we were on the schedule, but I just totally forgot.
Yeah, honestly.
So anyway, this year will be the 26th running of the South Nyack 10 Mile Run with your permission, of course. And once again, we're representing the Rockland Roadrunners and we'd like to use your hawks, your roaches, your parking spaces and bring in about 600 runners and sanders, everything. As long as the construction doesn't screw us up at all, which I don't think it will this year. I don't think it'll...
It's a Saturday anyway, right?
It's a Sunday.
Oh, it's a Sunday.
Yeah, the only day that we could really run this race is Sunday because we use so many of the streets and we go out to the end of the pier and there's a lot going on. I do try to do it on a Saturday, it wouldn't work, so just thinking of Sunday. So it's always the first Sunday after Labor Day, so this year will be the 7th of September.
Everybody kind of liked those ice pops we had.
Where they came from, but they were a big hit, yeah, yeah. So we're expecting this year about 600 people. We're also looking with, to work with Dick's Sporting Goods in the mall. They're thinking of sponsoring a race this year. Do us a good or go over there, which would be nice. And charities are pretty, or the beneficiaries, I should say, are pretty much the same. We're not including the ambulance corps this year only because the club is is getting behind the ambulance corps' race in December. Okay? So we figured that...
Which was very successful.
Which is very successful for the first running of that and I'm sure that's going to continue throughout. So the club will make a contribution and for, and for that race. Otherwise, it's the, it's the two firehouses for one, you know, and the depot. And the Paimon Firehouse, the Sunday supper, Soup Angels with both Nyack food kitchens. And we're also giving money to the Rockland Roadrunner Scholarship Fund, which is something that we started this past year. We gave out $4,000 this year in scholarships to Rockland Counties. We get 90% of the volunteers that cost marshaled the race are all high school students and all from running programs throughout the county. So we want to give back a little bit to them too. So again, I'm just asking for your permission, hopefully.
I'll make the resolution.
I'll certainly make the resolution that we grant permission to the South Nyack 10 Mile Run on the 7th of September using the facilities of the village of South Nyack as needed.
Do we have insurance?
We will get, we always get it.
But it should be already in there.
Subject to the insurance.
And actually, I think it's you guys, Grandview, Paimon and who else? Who else is other insurance? I think that's it.
Well, you're a few feet into Orange Town, so I always have to approach them.
Okay, you always do that as well too, yeah, okay, yeah. Orange Town provides us with the board of zones, which is nice.
All second, top of the...
All in favor? Aye aye.
Okay. So for good weather, that's all. Hey, wait, 25 years, it's never rained on...
Not that much.
So if you're planning a wedding or something, September 7th is the day to do it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yoga in the Park, summer fall of 2014. I have the application filled out by myself already to be a certified yoga instructor and want to start an outside class that's going to supplement me, it's going to use both the trail for a run and then finishing up with a workout, which is going to be, it'll be five to eight people and perhaps up at 8:00, 9:00 o'clock in the morning, PM, maybe 6:00 to 7:00, once a week. Maybe a little mile job on the trail and finishing with a yoga workout in the park.
Did he do this?
Well, he wants to do this.
Yeah, summer, but once a week, what is, you said once a week?
No, he said, no. Because he hasn't, he hasn't organized it. He's going to commission to go forward. There was an email I closed that came from Andrew regarding this, it's in my packet.
Is this a for-profit?
This is, yeah, this is the same question that we go around and, and round because, you know, it keeps changing.
He's charging people to participate in this?
He is, but let me just say, I think what we're currently at and we're allowing Jeff at the Nyack Fitness to use the facilities, subject of course to insurance and so on, which is what we do. But the general rule has been that if you don't, even if you're a for-profit, if you are not using the village property to the exclusion of anyone else, we've so far said okay. Now that still leaves our potential tennis friends because that's a different situation where if you're using the tennis court, nobody's using the tennis court. So this is going to come up again. But for now, that's what we've done. And I think, I think if we allow Costaldo to use that on a regular basis, which he does and presents us every year with his insurance rider naming the village, I think we have to extend the same deal to anyone else who works here. He doesn't answer the question, but we haven't asked that yet, so.
Keith, you, you're in sync with that?
Yeah, I mean, it works for me. I mean, you can impose a time limitation. You can see if it doesn't work, then, you know, you don't have to renew the license, so.
Well, we're not giving a license for a specific term, not particularly. Although...
Well, we, Costaldo, I think you give him a year. He gives us a year's, his nine is a year.
Yeah, but that's because he gives us a new insurance thing every year, because probably his insurance already is every year.
Correct.
So in practice, that's the way it's going. So maybe that's how we do it.
My suggestion would be to put a term on these things so that you can review them if it doesn't work. I mean, and frankly, yeah, I mean, I don't imagine it's going to be disruptive or obtrusive, but other kinds of things could be.
His comment here in the application we actually filled out, "I will be conducting a yoga slash runners class, one or two times per week in Business Park and overnight and only..."
Oh, in Elizabeth.
Yes, that was his, yes, he wants to go run the trail and then he'd go to finish his stretching exercises in Business Park. Now, you see Andrew suggested, didn't consider that, it's better having it in the...
Yeah, but that's a separate, he's asking us the question and he understands the, he understands the insurance requirement that we have.
Oh, yes, I know, that was his beginning.
And he's filled out the application.
Yes, that was the beginning.
It's my feeling that we have in the past permitted this type of thing and we should continue, although perhaps we should at each time now that we're asked, well, put in one year, although there's been a functional one year term to it. We should actually word the resolution that way. And that would also mean that we would be sure to know that the insurance is continually... Yeah, right, otherwise we might be five years down the road with one insurance document from the first time. So to that end, I would make a motion that we allow this gentleman to use the park in the way he's describing the application subject to is providing insurance for the term one year when it was tried to be reviewed.
Do you have a second?
All second.
All in favor? Dana, did you want to come up and say something?
So I'm here to request that all village board meetings be video recorded and archived on the village board website for GBL link be provided on the village board website where residents could go and, sorry, I'm cold. And look at meetings. There are members of this community, obviously we're not, you already can see that there's usually about the same number of people here. And I don't think it's because people don't care. I think it's because, you know, you're working, you have kids, it's homework, there's activities and you're not able to make it. But it's not that you don't want to know what's going on. And it would be an amazing convenience for residents and it would provide transparency and it would just be great community outreach. Even though I'm, tonight I'm not acting that I do it, I will have this meeting and any other meetings archived and I'm happy to share it with you or share it with anybody that wants to see it. Keith, your thoughts?
Oh, well, my initial thought would be to refer the question to the newly formed communications committee because I think they're thinking about these kinds of things. And then, you know, Dana's proposal can go to them, they can munch on it and then report back and make reservations back to the board. I think that would be the thing to do.
Right, and then Dana's aware, yeah, she and I spoke today.
Barney, Barney and Andrew asked the, you know, committee chairperson to suggest it. And Andrew sent back a great, really enthusiastic email saying that he thinks videotaping and posting online would be, his words were, "A great idea, it promotes convenience for residents and transparency." But that, you know, they were still forming their ideas and he was hoping to be able to, I guess, talk about it some more at their next meeting.
And are you okay with that?
Yeah, and I mean, certainly if you decide that you're going to do it and you want this meeting or, you know, maybe it could take them a while, I don't know how long it could take them. But, you know, I'd be happy to share anything with them or my expertise with them or whatever.
That'd be great, you know.
Thank you.
Great.
If I may say, you know, I don't want to be the fly in the ointment here, but I, I'm not quite sure that there isn't a larger group of people who come to these meetings every other, every other Tuesday. I think it's the people who really care who do come. And when there are big issues, like we had an issue down in Salisbury, you couldn't get into this place. So whether it's people make excuses, "Well, they got the babies, I'm working late, I can't." I think part of it is, is also, and I think a large part of it is indifference on the part of a lot of people. Now, I'm not saying that your idea isn't a good idea. I prefer not to be on the camera, you know, I'm like bodily, I prefer not to be, you know. So, but on the other hand, you know, you want to, you want to put it out there, maybe it will, it will...
Maybe it'll spur more people to watch or to become interested or to actually...
Yeah, maybe, maybe it might.
Maybe nobody will watch it.
Maybe they won't, you know, I don't really know. This is an experiment, obviously. It's not a, it's not a given, so I prefer not to be on, on the camera. So, I mean, that's my own personal feeling. How much it's going to do to everybody out there to sit there and sit through two hours of a trustees board meeting.
Well, and you wouldn't really have to do that and you could...
I would, I would, I'm here, why would I look at it?
But maybe you're, you know, maybe you look at the agenda and you see, well, the dog park is, you know, on here. And if, for example, like I'm doing this tonight, maybe somebody wants to watch, you know, the part that I have to send.
They can pick and choose.
I can, you know, make little notes that say, you know, at 25 minutes, they discuss the videotaping. Or, you know, then people could scroll through, they could find that spot, they could watch what they're interested in.
It's up to them.
And that's, it's up to them, you know.
America's a free country. They can, they can choose to watch whatever they want. They can choose to have their own opinions. And, you know, and we're certainly will be open to listen to people's opinions if they come here, that's, that's the American way.
You know, and the community is already talking on the Facebook page. I mean, even when I suggested that I was going to do this, I had over 50 people respond to that. And I thought, wow, what if even a 10th of those people decided they were going to watch the meeting?
How many of those people have ever been to a meeting here? That's the question. See, I'm not, I'm being, I'm being the fraud.
But I would say probably most of them not. But it's not, you know, but the fact that it is available to them, you know, you could watch it on your iPhone at the bus stop if you wanted to.
Dana, will there be any editing of this?
I mean, I would not suggest, this is, you know, whatever you and the communications committee decide. You could provide two versions. You could say, "This is the meeting in its entirety and this is a highlight video." So if somebody wanted to watch a, you know, 15 minute version of it, you could do it that way. You could do anything you want, but I, I mean, as far as public access...
Who would actually do that? I mean, as you said tonight, maybe you'd be here to do it, maybe it might be somebody else, but...
Right, I mean, you know, that depends. I mean, you could have someone volunteer to do it or you could pay someone to do it, you know. There are plenty of people that, you know, in this community that know how to do it.
I think it's a good thing to bring up with Andrew in the communication. And he'll be back next week, I think we should talk. That's fine.
Great.
Thanks.
MS4 Annual Report acceptance available for review. Jimmy, you want to... Well, it just came today.
Okay.
Okay, so we need to have it.
What is this? It's our stormwater report.
The board has accepted from a contractor. It's, it's available for public review.
We can't not accept it, we only know what it is. Did you take a look at what you did?
Yeah, we, Denise and I did it over, so.
You did, oh, okay.
I looked through it today. It's just got a sip available. Denise puts it on the website, so it has to be available for 30 days as part of the MS4.
But we have to accept it after or we accept it before that?
Accept the report and make it available.
Okay, then I make a motion to accept the report.
Second?
All in favor? Aye. And this is something with this past meeting, you authorized it to go forward.
To go forward, yeah.
The next, so this is this past year's.
This is, yeah, here it is, exactly.
Has anybody ever looked at this? Has anybody ever come in and requested to look at it, Sally?
It's an enormous...
No, I'm just asking, has anybody ever requested to?
No, it stayed on our, on our top of our...
No, but we're applying, presumably it's not so much for public consumption but that the DEIS wants to be able to say, know that we're...
I mean, I'm just curious, one of those things that...
And you know what happens if we don't do it?
Yeah, no, no, I'm saying we have to do it, I'm not saying we're being, you know...
Yes, we do. Payman Abstrak, oh, I'm sorry, what do you have here?
Uh, no, just real quick, I wanted to give an update on the dog park.
Oh, okay.
Which is simply that I emailed Wayne back and forth. Wayne has sort of become, you know, my guy I talked to there. Based on and priced out what they think is appropriate pea gravel and so on and so forth, just so they have a rough idea of what they want to do. I, with this, I'm going to go back and talk to Nancy at Park Conservancy and try and get that lit up now that they've had their Misfits concert.
So this is Nancy Black?
Nancy, whatever, yeah.
The southern board is there when you're calling them.
Who now probably has a little more time on their hands. And we have some legitimate numbers. They seem to be happy simply with the idea of edging it and putting pea gravel. That's kind of the decision that comes to its simplest and wouldn't be too expensive. So I told them that yes, if, Park, first of all, Park Conservancy says that they've found their experience that the way to do it is to have a monetary gift given to the village. The village purchases rather than giving a gift of, like, the gravel because of the liability issues that they've had with the park. So if it's done that way, the only issue I see is, one, is there won't be sales tax on it, which is nice. But B, we may have to go out for bidding for smaller things, even if it has a gift. And that was a question for you. If we're given a gift to beautify a certain public area and that gift is stipulated to be used for a certain purpose, right? Does that have to be bid?
No.
Because, because it's a specific gift?
Correct.
And it's not, oh, it's not coming out of general fund? So someone says, "We'd love to put a tree here..." So someone says, "We'd love to put a tree here, here's, here's a thousand dollars to buy the tree from this guy." We don't have to go out to bid and pick which person is going to fund the tree, right? If it's being paid for, the money that he donated.
They should pay for it to the, to the person, I would think.
Well, we'll get into this later, but, but the opinion of the Park Conservancy was that that was not the right way to do it. And they felt that it was always better to have the municipality actually make the purchase.
But they're telling us where to make the purchase?
Well, no, I just want to be clear on that, whether they can. Really more importantly, whether, whether it has to go out to bid if it's being purchased with gifted money. It's not general fund money that was raised publicly, right?
I would, I'd have to, I'd have to research that.
You have time, you have time.
But you're saying the Conservancy people said the way they do it is...
The way they do it is...
A monetary gift to the municipality.
And then the municipality goes out and buys whatever it is that they would, so for example, playground equipment, and I think it was specific, you know, playground equipment is a specifically important one because of the liability involved, right? So if you take, if you, if you are given some, some playground equipment and you install it, and there's, and something happens, the people who are liable are different than if you were given money and you went out and bought it and put it there in your...
Well, that's true.
And, and it was their feeling that the latter scheme was, protected everyone better.
Right, but why?
So it protected them better.
Why would you not bid it out?
Because if you're being given money...
Right.
You're not spending taxpayer money. And if they, and if the person who donates the money donates it for a specific purpose, that purpose could be so specific that it entails a single vendor, and is that okay?
Is that the case in this particular situation?
I don't know that it is. I kind of doubt it, but, but the question is, do we need to go out for bid? Because some of, one, at least one part of this, you know, gravel is going to be, you know, four thousand dollars or thereabouts, right? So it's not a small amount, but it's not public money. So the question is, how's that work?
Well, I don't know, they kind of vote money, I'd have to research it.
Okay.
Do you want to research that?
Well, what, yes, oh, because once it's given to a municipality, it's not public money?
I'd say so.
Except that it wasn't, it's above and beyond the budgeted, you know, revenue.
I, I...
Does that not matter?
Well, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, well, we'll have to see, because that's, that's a question that may come up.
All right.
And so that's roughly where that stands now. So progress is the executive sum for that.
And Jimmy would be in charge of doing all the work and everything, would you decide?
Yeah, yeah.
But they're not going to do any work. You feel comfortable with it?
Yeah, and we discussed the different options, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, the possibility of grading it would probably bring the contractors they would have to pay for, but, but, you know, some of the basic work, that would be the contribution of the village, it'd be Jimmy's, I think, I think that would be Jimmy's.
There wouldn't be anything that would be opposite to what you would do with finding future projects.
Nothing, nothing, so, we don't, it's not really quite immediately.
Payment of abstracts, number eight fourteen dot twenty-four, general fund, thirteen thousand three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fourteen cents. Number B fourteen dot twenty-four, police, one thousand eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-four cents. Number eight fifteen dot zero-one, general fund, eleven thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars and fifty-one cents. Number B one five dot zero-one, police, five thousand two hundred and one dollars and six cents. Do I have a motion to accept those abstracts?
You have to sign me up for motion.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor? Before I adjourn, I've asked Jerry Ible, who has come, and he is currently on our South Nyack Task Force, and Jerry, do you have any updates, anything that you want?
Well, I think you've pretty much covered it. The idea that we've had meetings with a couple of residents, Ray Tulen came, had some nice ideas about other alternatives for, for the parking and access situation, so it's great to get, you know, additional input on that, so we've set up a meeting with the state to present them with some of those ideas and ask them to go back and explore them a bit, look for feasibility. I think the idea is, I think we're, we're looking for alternatives, and any alternative's going to have some positives, it's going to have some negatives, want to be able to get that fleshed out a bit, get feedback on that, so we can get some sense as to which way we think it's best for the village.
Could I ask a question? She can, after, let me, or should, we can go back into public? Can I do that now, Keith? Can we go back up to, out to a public meeting?
Yeah, unless you...
Unless, unless...
Unless, well, unless you want to adjourn, and I don't know whether this is a public, if you want to be part of the public meeting, or...
Say, let it adjourn.
Okay, we'll let it adjourn, okay. All in favor of the chairman? Do I have a resolution?
Aye.
All in favor? Sorry, you made the decision, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, me, second?
I'm pleased.
Gentlemen, right here.
Second.
All in favor, meeting is now adjourned.